Vice President Coffey is on her way and trustee Wong will also be joining us virtually. Announcements of items to be discussed in closed session, we have government code 549-56.8 conference with real property negotiators. Property is 2101 Stone Boulevard negotiating parties or Washington Unified School District, DWK and KNN under negotiation instructions to negotiators concerning the price in terms of payment. Item two, government code 549-56.8 conference with real property negotiators. The property is 425 Todd Hunter Avenue, Bright Park. Negotiating proper parties are Washington Unified School District, DWK and CBRE under negotiation. Instructions to negotiators regarding the sale options for Bright Park. Item three, government code section 549-57 public employee discipline dismissal release. And item four, government code section 549-57.6 conference with labor negotiators, WSCA, CSCA and management. Are there any comments regarding closed session?
None received.
Okay, well then we will head into closed session and we will be back at 6:30. Thank you.
...
Good evening. Sorry, the board's gonna need additional ten minutes, okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our roll call. Vice President Coffey.
Present.
Clerk Castro.
Here.
Trustee Hunt.
Here.
And Trustee Wong.
Here.
And she is clearly virtual, but she is here tonight. Thank you. All right, announcements of items of actions taken in closed session. Government Code Section 549-56.8, the conference with real property negotiators. Property 2101 Stone Boulevard. Negotiating parties: Washington Unified School District, DWK and CNN. Under negotiation, instructions to negotiators concerning price and terms of payment. Information was received and direction was given. Item number two, Government Code 549-56.8. Conference with real property negotiators. The property is 425 Todd Hunter Avenue, Bright Park. Negotiating parties: Washington Unified School District, DWK and CBRE. Under negotiation, instructions to negotiators regarding the sale options for Bright Park. Information was received. Item three, Government Code Section 549-57. Public employee discipline dismissal release. Direction was given. Item four, Government Code Section 549-57.6. Conference with labor negotiators, SBCA, CSEA and management. Information was received. And that takes us now to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to recommend one change. If we can move action item P6. If we can move that up to take place after action item P4.
Thank you. So, item six, which is regarding Bright Park, will be moved to action item five. Yes. Okay, are there any other changes?
No.
Okay, then a motion to approve.
Motion, move.
Okay, move by Vice President Coffey. Second. Second by Trustee Wong. And because Trustee Wong is virtual, we will do roll call on all of our votes this evening. Vice President Coffey.
Aye.
Trustee Hunt.
Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
And I too vote aye. Okay, and that takes us now to our student association reports. Do we have anyone here for our WSTA report? We do not. Okay, then take it away, our Vice President. Pagano turn for our CSEA report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President. Trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, Cabinet, colleagues, the public, my fellow classified members. I hope you are all enjoying these unseasonably cool summer weeks. When I paused for a moment to write this speech, I was overwhelmed in a good way. With all the experiences and memories this past year has provided, even the challenging ones. I'm grateful and I believe I can speak for our entire executive cabinet. As well, which includes Heather, Christie, David, Michael, Daniel and myself. That we, along with the backing of Riverview Chapter 168. Desire to share and extend our gratitude. To everyone in this room that has helped us reach the contract agreement that is before you on the agenda tonight. At times, negotiations can be arduous and emotionally draining. And I'm sure both sides feel overwhelmed. I firmly believe that we are continuing to make progress in terms of classified growth and development. Following your approval tonight, we will have new safety gear for some of our members. Most significantly for those who are exposed to the weather and at times extreme weather on our yards and in our roadways. Many will also now have access to professional and identifiable attire. In addition, we will be receiving salary growth. And as far as our schedule goes, some of our members will be moving towards the latter part of their salary schedule. Jumping a column a year sooner than they would previously. This is something I want to highlight and explain a little deeper. We are committed to narrowing our schedule down. Decreasing the number of years to get to your top step sooner. Although we have made progress, this work is not done. We will continue to shorten the salary schedule in addition to adequate and fair raises this next year. No one should have to spend more than 10 years on a salary schedule to reach their top step. Especially those who are paid the lowest salaries but are critical to the functioning of the district. We know that nothing is perfect and no one is perfect, but I want to publicly share how proud I am of our classified members. Their tireless work and efforts this past year and beyond. As we move into the fall, I want to remind everyone that we classified members are responsible for driving. Caring for, cleaning up after, supporting in and out of the classroom, maintaining facilities, assisting. Helping our students and staff each and every operational day. Actually, we also work the summer months. We are proud of who we are, what we do and what we have accomplished and look forward to starting this new year. With the acknowledgement that comes with your actions tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and that now takes us to public comments this evening. I'm going to read our disclaimer and then we will call up our public comments. Members of the public may address the board on topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit or an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children. made during a public Board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy unless the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of Board. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public Board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the Board may not prohibit such comments, our policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting, um, law. Also, um, what is true is that we, um, now receive, uh, public comments over email that are electronically submitted to us, and then we read them before a meeting, and they are also put into the public record. So we've received three this evening, um, that we have all read and that will also be part of the record. Okay, let me call up our public comments.
We have one general public comment, uh, Ms. Jennifer McAllister.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be here. I'm so excited, um, to introduce to you guys these two wonderful students. Um, I'm Jennifer McAllister. I've had the wonderful pleasure of working for Washington Unified School District for 28 years. I am your one and your only ag teacher, and I love it. It is the hardest job you'll ever love. That's what I tell my, my students. Part of my job is, uh, to see the, the tree and the seed, to see the potential of my students. And I teach animal science, ag biology, Farm to Fork 1, and Farm to Fork 2. And part of my classes, we have an agricultural education leadership organization, FFA. My two students here are raising hogs for the Yolo County Fair. This is me inviting all of you. Please come to the Yolo County Fair. Gianni and Adella are going to be selling their hogs at the auction on Saturday, August 16th, from 9 to 3, and we would love for you to be there. They're actually showing their hogs on Thursday, the 14th, at the Woodland Fairgrounds from 8 to 12. They would love your support, and I'm gonna let them talk to you now about their hog.
Hi, my name is Adella Sutton. Um, my hog's name is Catty Wampus. We bought her at Golden State Genetics over in Turlock. She was $400. And we feed her 19% Showright food from PigBee. I spend about $121 every, every week and a half to feed her. And once, we had to deworm them with pellet food because pigs are like dogs. They have worms before you deworm them. So we did that, and I don't know if it did anything because I never saw any worms in her poop, so we did that. And then, another time, we had to give them an oral suspension, or oxidia, which is just little diarrhea, when it caused one of the pigs to stop gaining weight. And then every single morning, every single afternoon, I walk her around and I brush her and then give her water and stuff, you know? So if you guys want to buy her, you get 200 pounds of fresh pork. So keep that in mind. Right?
Hi, my name's Gianni Garcia. I also have a hog. My hog's name is Caboose. Uh, we keep our hogs at Fiery Ginger Farms just by the library. Uh, my hog's a little bit smaller than hers. She's at 178 pounds right now. She had, uh, a bigger problem gaining weight than her pig. Um, she had oxidia. We treated her with the oral suspension, and we built a fence to try to get her to gain weight.
I'm gonna pause you real quick. Let's just add three minutes for each of our speakers, since we have two students here too. So, um, don't worry about the time. Keep going.
Um, uh, last week, she had a rate of gain of 3.7. It was, uh, we had to weigh her halfway through the week to see if we, our new method of making her gain weight was working. We put her on, uh, palein and fat to try to get her to gain weight. Uh, she's a very loud, very stubborn hog. When I'm walking her, we have to walk her, we have to walk our hog for the showmanship training. Uh, when I walk her, I walk her around the ring, every lap, she barks at me. She tries running the other way. It, it really hasn't gotten, it has gotten more maneuverable, but it's gotten, it's been about the same. She's always been stubborn. Uh, we had to, I had to, no, we, we had to wet her food. We had to put her on palein and fat. We had to build a fence to get her to eat her food because, uh, Catty Wampus was more dominant than her. She would often push her off the bowl. Um, we had to stay longer with her because she usually stopped eating once somebody left. Uh, Adella had to screw the, her bowl to a piece of plywood because she flipped her bowl whenever she's eating. She also likes to step in, step and lay her bowl after rolling in mud. Well, uh, hope to see some of you guys there. Thank you for your support and your time. Thank you.
Okay, and for anybody, uh, watching at home who can't see these personally, just, uh, message us and we will send you the information on the flyer. Does that sound good? Alright, um, good luck to you and thank you for being here and giving your time this evening to share with us. Oh yeah, let's do it. Sure.
Well, we can hold her, I guess.
Okay, and I know we have more public comments. Um, are those, those are for specific agenda items? Okay, okay. Alright. And we do not have a public hearing this evening. We do not have information or discussion items, so that takes us right to consent. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Vice President Coffey, seconded by, uh, Trustee Hunt. And again, we have to do our roll call votes. Um, Trustee Wong? We'll skip to Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Okay, I heard an aye. Okay, uh, Vice President Coffey?
Aye.
Trustee Hunt?
Aye.
And I too vote aye. Alright, and that now takes us to our action items. And our first action item is the approval of the disclosure of the collective bargaining agreement between Washington Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Riverview Chapter 168, and the associated CSEA Classified Management and Confidential Employees Cost. Monique Sobal, our Chief Business Officer.
Thank you. I'm excited to come for your, um, come before you for your approval of the disclosure of collective bargaining agreement. What is, it's in essence, um, the district's certification that it can afford a compensation increase related to a collective bargaining agreement with one of their labor partners. This is specifically for our CSEA team and our confidential and classified management. Um, I will, if you don't mind, allow our Assistant Superintendent in the next item to be able to explain the details. However, I will share with you the financial impact. The financial impact for our CSEA agreement is $1,626,591. And for our classified management and confidential, that's $135,348. We are required to disclose this and have it reviewed by our Yolo County Office of Education, in which they have reviewed and approved the disclosure.
Okay. Are there any public comments?
None received.
Okay. Um, are there any Board comments or questions? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve?
I move.
Okay, moved by Vice President Coffey, seconded by Clerk Castro. Um, Trustee Wong? Clerk Castro? Vice President Coffey?
Aye.
Trustee Hunt?
Aye.
And I too vote aye. Thank you. So now, item number two is approval of the tentative agreement between Washington Unified School District and the California School Employees Association in its review, Chapter 168, for the period beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2027. Shay Borges, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, welcome.
Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, our Cabinet, community members, and I'm pleased to present tonight's action items regarding the successful conclusion of negotiations between Washington Unified School District and the California Schools Employees Association, River Chapter 168. Our teams have reached a tentative agreement on the 25-27 collective bargaining agreement. This partnership focused on agreements included key provisions on Article 6 transfers, Article 10 organizational security and dues deduction, Article 18 salary and compensation, Article 19 unit member benefits, and Article 21 safety. I'd like to take this moment to extend my sincere appreciation to all the bargaining team members on both CSEA and WSTA for their dedication, professionalism, and focus on reaching a fair and forward-thinking agreement. And we are proud to bring this forward tonight for the Board of Trustees to approve, um, this as it reflects the best interests of both our employees and our schools.
Great, thank you. Are there any public comments?
None received.
Okay, Board comments or questions?
I move when we're ready.
Okay, well, I just want to give a big congratulations as well and a lot of thanks. And I know Vice President, uh, Ruth Pagano-Tern, um, gave some very, um, strong comments earlier. Um, but I really want to thank the full team, district, and CSEA for all the work that you've done on this. Um, and it's really exciting now to be able to, um, post those jobs at a, uh, different, um, salary, um, at a well-deserved salary. Okay, well then, with that said?
A second.
Okay, moved by Vice President Coffey, seconded by Clerk Castro, Trustee Hunt?
Aye.
Vice President Coffey?
Aye.
I too vote aye. Um, Clerk Castro?
Aye.
Trustee Wong?
Aye.
And now we go to Item 3, which is approval of the 2025-2026 salary schedules for classified employees effective July 1st, 2025. Again, with our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Shay Borges.
Thank you. The updated salary schedule for classified employees is part of the negotiations for Article 18 salary and compensations, which reflects step and column increases agreed upon during recent negotiations, affects all of our classified employee groups covered by this agreement, and is effective as of July 1st, 2025.
Any public comments?
None received.
Are there any Board comments or questions?
No.
Okay, then can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Clerk Castro, seconded by Vice President Coffey. Um, Trustee Hunt?
Aye.
Vice President Coffey?
Aye.
I too vote aye. Clerk Castro? And Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Great, and that takes us to Action Item Number 4. The approval of the 2025-2026 salary schedules for classified management and confidential employees effective July 1st, 2025. Again, with our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Shay Borges.
I never get to stay up here this long. This is fun. Uh, um, thank you. A compensation adjustment is proposed for the classified management and confidential employees who are not part of a recognized bargaining unit, but to align with the negotiated increases granted to all classified employees. This approach is consistent with common district procedures where non-represented classifications are in alignment with union negotiated salary adjustments. We'd ask the Board for their approval.
Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, any Board questions or comments? Okay, then can I get a motion?
All move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Hunt, seconded by Clerk Castro.
Good.
Um, Trustee Wong? Clerk Castro? I too vote aye. Vice President Coffey?
Aye.
And Trustee Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and then our action items. As a reminder, we moved up, um, item that was originally 6, which is the adoption of Resolution Number 2526-50, our Declaration of Bright Park as exempt surplus land for park and recreational use. Monique Sobal, our Chief Business Officer.
Thank you. This evening, I am joined by our attorney from, um, who is the expert for our facilities projects, and Mr. Sam Santana, to be able to share information about this resolution and what this means to the
So as you know, we've established a 7-Eleven committee who has reviewed the property in question. Uh, they've deemed for it to be surplus, and, um, they've presented their report. They held multiple public hearings as required, and they held Brown Act notice meetings, as we all know. And, uh, now for consideration tonight is this resolution for the Board to declare the Bright Park property to be exempt surplus property. Um, once that property is declared to be exempt surplus property, then we can proceed to provide the statutorily required notices to the public agencies that are required under statute to be notified of the availability of this property to be used as uh, parks and recreation property. And in addition to that, um, part of the 7-Eleven committee's findings, which we will incorporate into these notices, is that, um, we will have a restriction on the deed that the property be limited to use as only parks and rec property, and also that there be an easement that will, uh, run with the property, that will provide for the district's use of the property as parks and recreation, uh, property, um, in conjunction with the city's ownership of that, or whichever public, uh, agency buys it, but I think the city is most interested in it.
Thank you. Are there any public comments?
We have two public comments.
Okay.
Pat Flint?
Welcome, Ms. Flint.
Thank you. Just want to refer, first off, to what I call the Bible, the district's facilities master plan. Under the proposed priority project, Options and Plans Under Utilized Site, there's information under 2.12 on how to go about, or suggests how to go about, um, using or not using the unused site. Uh, you received today an email from me. Um, there are numerous questions I have and questions I think you should be asking. Uh, number one is, uh, the larger parcel serves as Golden State and Riverbank Elementary School site. Why is Golden State even mentioned? It hasn't been It hasn't been a school site named that for six or seven years, at least. And why do the acreages still not match, even from the, from the transmittal to the resolution? They're different. Even the, um, over, or the, um, 711 committee asked that question. Has that ever been answered? Why are they different? Um, did the board agree to the club west and the tennis courts being included within the park boundaries? I don't remember hearing anything whether that was a decided, um, option or not. The 711 committee, um, pursuant to ed code section 17387, should evaluate school enrollment data, conduct public hearings on the use of district property. I own, I'm only aware of one public hearing that was held. Uh, the committee members were not giving, given the charge, we're not, no, excuse me, we're not given the charge of being a district-wide 711 committee, only a one parcel committee. Is, is that even a legal committee? If it's not overseeing everything that, um, uh, underutilized site? And therefore, uh, without this information, the enrollment data for the entire district and the current city build out, uh, was not given to the 711 committee as far as I know. Only that one specific property. And I don't know if you're aware, but it build out, the city will be 90,000-plus residents? Are they even talking school sites with you? Are they talking school populations with you? So you need to take that in consideration when you're getting rid of school sites and selling it off. The 711 committee was charged to review and making a finding on the Bright Park position as being surplus property, not exempt surplus property. How and when did it become exempt? You are aware by designating exempt that you do not get, or you do not have to get fair market value. Was this explained to you? The 711 committee requested that you get fair market value for this. And the only other thing I'll say very quickly is you are required, um, by law, if you've taken any funding for this school, report it to the state of California, and you may owe them money.
Thank you, Ms. Flint.
Dani Langford.
Welcome, Ms. Langford.
I'm going to continue with what she was having to say so the community can see what she has to say since that her letter doesn't get read out. The City Parks representatives stated that they need 45 to 50 million dollars for this project. They have a grant for 15 million for the project. Where is the remaining funding coming from? 15 million doesn't go very far. I hope that this board is not planning to give the city free land. Is this why exempt status is being pursued? Have they paid off the rec center yet? My guess is almost 20 years later, they still owe a substantial amount. Do you know how much is owed to Washington Unified? Is the property really worth giving up versus leasing to the city for a 15 million dollar grant that the city has never needed before? They have pursued and been funded before without purchasing our property. After all, they lease the property for very little. The resolution states that the 711 committee report found the district currently occupied school sites sufficient to house the current enrollment. Were they given the information to determine this, or were just Riverbank enrollment? The grounds have been made available to the community use as a park when the school is not in session, and when the property is not required for the district's programs or events, but maintained by the city, and that the district desires that the property continue to be maintained and operated as a public park while retaining the district's priority use. Is the language put into the resolution to meet physical education requirements as mentioned in the last meeting comments? If needed, uh, how can we legally sell the property? Surplus property is essentially all, any real estate owned by the school district that is no longer required for educational programs, administrative functions, or operation, all needs. Nothing mentioned about classroom buildings. The district does not have the current or future need for the property for school classroom buildings. Checked, uh, checked the facilities master plan that she talked about, and do we have a 25-year plan? With that said, that was part. I also attended the 711 committee and have concerns about the fair market value. I've seen the city benefit over the district. And while we, the taxpayers, pay for it either way, the school district can't afford for the city to not pay them fair market value. And that was something that I, that I heard from each one of the 711 committee members, is that they want to see the school district get fair market value, and I hope that that's true. I too wonder how much we owe, how much is owed to the school district from the city on the rec center? Because that whole deal, I was a part of that for years when that was built, and that whole deal really messed the school district up, not the city, but the school district. And you guys are here to protect the school district's interests, and that's what we have to look forward to. I think we all want a park. We all want a beautiful park. That's, that's a given. That part of town especially deserves it, but we need to do it the right way so it protects the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
No other public comments.
Okay. Thank you. Then I will open up to my board colleagues.
Okay.
I'm looking at everyone.
I was looking over there.
Um.
Clerk Castro.
Okay. Um, okay. I'm going to just start with general questions because I, I know there are concerns of the community and then also us board, um, and the taking, uh, into consideration of what the 711 committee recommend, recommended. Um, I know there was a legislative change recently that totally effective immediately, they, uh, removed surplus, right? Like a, or I don't want to say remove surplus, the 711 committee process. Um, so I guess my question, maybe you can give clarification or just to me, um, to everybody, but by us, um, deeming the property exempt from surplus, exempt surplus property, and I, and I did also, it was a general question to an attorney that I sit with every day. Um, that does not mean that we cannot negotiate for fair market value, correct?
Correct, yes. So the, the statute you're referring to was put in place during COVID to exempt, um, public schools from having to follow the 711 committee process. Um, obviously, we did follow that process, so, you know, that, uh, that's number one. Um, secondly, the exempt surplus property designation is, uh, being used here for the specific purpose of streamlining the process to target the use of the property as parks and rec property. And so by doing so, we're going to only provide notices to other public agencies for parks and rec purposes. We're not going to provide options for people to buy it for housing, or, uh, low-income housing, or anything like that. Um, so we're going to take it out of that whole, uh, potential use and just target it for what we have in mind in this particular case. And we are still, um, getting an appraisal on the property, and the city's getting one. We're going to hire an independent appraiser to review that, and then also potentially hire an independent appraiser to provide a separate appraisal. So the valuation of the property is going to be based on the appraised value. It's not going to be, uh, given away, or, you know, any kind of sweetheart deal cut. Um, it's going to be based on the appraised value. Obviously, we're free to negotiate, uh, with the city, but, um, that's typically going to be the baseline for the valuation of the property.
Okay, and then I can't speak for anybody else, but I think for me, and I'm sure maybe everybody else too, we are in the interest of our children and the community as a whole. But being generational here to West Sacramento, just in the Broderick and Bright area, I know, so going into the, to the, um, I guess this will actually all tie in together, the deed restriction, or using the tool, the instrument, a, an easement, is actually a better tool instead of maybe the joint use agreement, right? Because that would follow the land and deed.
Absolutely, yes. Uh, I know that that was a very, uh, particular focus of the 711 committee is to continue to use the property as parks and rec. I know that's been the direction from the board and from staff all along, and so that's been very clear. Um, and that's why we followed this particular exempt surplus, um, property process to laser focus on using the property as parks and rec only. And that's going to, as you mentioned, going to be carried through via a deed restriction, and the city's intent is to use it as parks and rec only, and so we're going to make sure that it's only used for parks and rec. And as you mentioned, that will flow into ultimately an easement, uh, for the district benefit that will run with the land, that the district is going to work with the city to have access to, uh, the property for parks and rec purposes as well. So that's the whole intent, all the focus is on making sure that that's going to run through every step of the process.
So that would cover concerns of, um, using the, or, uh, our, our students using the, um, property for physical education and such, and then, um, right? Like for that, that type of thing? And then, um, one of the, one of the, um, questions or concerns is, and, and we've also voiced that, but, um, the board, but identifying the square footage, that's what we're doing with the surveyor, correct?
Yes, so the city is, uh, commissioning a survey of the property. Um, we don't know the exact legal description yet. Obviously, it's one big parcel. We have to cut it up into, uh, two parcels, and so that's being done. Uh, the district is also going to hire an independent, uh, consultant to review that and to make sure that we are on board with, um, what the survey looks like. Um, I'm also aware that there is, um, some particular areas that may or may not still be included in that, and that's going to be determined in the near future in terms of, I think, the tennis court area and something like, uh, along those lines. So those are the, uh, steps that are occurring concurrently, uh, right now. So we, you know, we're doing the appraisal, reviewing that, and also a survey and reviewing that.
And then giving, giving, or I guess getting into the process. So let's say we do deem it as recommended for exempt surplus. At any point between now and negotiating fair market value and getting into negotiations with the city, we do have the, um, ability to either amend or make updates to the resolution? Correct?
Uh, well, the resolution is binding that it's exempt surplus property. That's just the very, you know, the 711 is the first step. This resolution is the second step. This is just going to permit us to then issue the notices, uh, to those other public, uh, parks and rec agencies. Um, once we have interest from any of those agencies, we can then start those discussions of exactly what's included, how much that's going to cost. So there are many, many steps to go, um, before the, the district has, uh, agreed to really anything in concrete. That's going to come, you know, further down the road when we have the final appraisal that's been approved by the district, the final survey that's been approved by the district, the final documentation that's been approved by the district, and that's all going to come back to the board in a public meeting for consideration and further discussion. And then at that point, you can approve what's presented.
So we would have to do our due diligence and.
Yes, we're doing all of that.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Hey, I can't tell, trustee Wong, if you have any comments, just yell out at any time if that happens.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Okay.
I'm just excited to see what's going to happen next. So, thank you, and thank you, uh, Castro for saying all the questions that we have all been thinking.
And I think, um, I'm just looking over my notes, um, and I check, check, check as you spoke. So, um, yes, thank you for that. Um, in terms of our demographer piece, we have, um, hired outside demographers that we've brought in, um, to share with us the information, um, and, and looking closely at what our projections are. Um, of course, students unfortunately don't move into neighborhoods in perfect class sizes, and it is a, um, constantly moving target, um, from what we see, um, but we are keeping close pulses, pulses on that, um, as well. Um, and trying to think, there was one more. Um, I wanted to share that when I first joined this board, um, well, maybe it was about 10 years ago, um, and the city had asked in a two-by-two for us to put Bright Park, um, to, to label it a park in perpetuity. And they asked us to do that so that they could apply for some grants, and they wanted us to say, this is a park in perpetuity. Um, and our board said, said no, because we felt like our, you know, fiscal responsibility was to the district, and we didn't want to tie the hands of future boards, um, and certainly tie the hands of the district in terms of the ability for what this park could mean in the future. Um, because as we know, with school districts, our, um, our greatest asset is, um, land, and it's important that our land first and foremost goes to our kids and what they're, you know, for them. Um, but also, if we need to make program changes, if we need to look at facilities as we've needed to look at with, um, other spaces in our district, then, um, this is an important revenue source for the district to do our, you know, um, fiduciary responsibility in terms of maximizing our, what we have as well. And so, um, I just wanted to bring up that history that, that this board, um, of course, um, I think the whole time I've served has wanted this to be a park for the community and a space that people can enjoy, uh, first and foremost, but also has led with, um, how can we make good decisions on behalf of the school district, Washington Unified, and our students now, and our students in the future? Um, and I think the easement, the pieces that you've brought here, um, do those pieces for us, um, but of course, we're going to keep a close pulse as we continue with this process, and I want to thank the public for their comments as well and for their questions. Um, so with that, if there's no other comments or questions, then I will take a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you. Okay, moved by trustee Hunt, seconded by Vice President Coffey. We're going to go back to trustee Hunt.
Aye.
Vice President, um, Coffey.
Aye.
Clerk Castro. Trustee Wong.
Aye.
And I too vote aye. Thank you. Okay. And that now takes us to, um, our approval of the contract with A through Z bus sales for the purchase of new school buses. Monique Sobal, our Chief Business Officer.
Thank you. I'm bringing forth this item on behalf of our transportation department, and, um, our team is back here, our wonderful team of Carrie Pena and Angelina Valencia. They work school buses every single day. And as we all are aware, there is a bus shortage, and they still make it work. But we're also experiencing a situation where the number of buses that we need, um, has come to be an issue. Currently, we have four buses that we need for the beginning of the school year, and then we'll need an additional four buses throughout the, the rest of the school year. Back in June, we spoke with the finance subcommittee about this problem, and we presented a solution, and there was a healthy discussion with lots of, of questions and looking at the legal aspects and the allowable costs, and the subcommittee made the recommendation, which we're bringing forth to you, to use our arts, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant to be able to purchase these buses. The arts, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant might seem to be a very odd funding source, but the name of the block grant, I think, is very limiting to really what the scope of the block grant is. The block grant allows for operational costs. It allows for paying for expenses related to COVID-19, for library books, for professional development, for instructional materials, not just for arts and music, but for math. So it's a very, um, vast type of discretionary block grant that enables our district to be able to purchase items that support students. But we still want it to make sure we're honoring kind of the premise of the name of the block. And so part of the rationale and the reason why we also think that the arts, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant is an ideal funding source is one of the key things that our buses do for us is they support the arts. When our band needs to travel somewhere, there is an immense amount to be equipped. And the electrical buses that we have right now that are no longer able to be used because the company went bankrupt and we're not able to fix them anymore, they're too small to be able to house all of our band material. And so by purchasing different buses with a larger capacity, that'll be able to. And so by purchasing different buses with a larger capacity, that'll be able to help band sports. It'll help support our field trip. And so this evening, we're requesting your approval to enter into a contract with A to Z bus sales for the purchase of new buses. They have those buses in stock right. So it's not a situation where we're placing the order and then in less than two weeks, we hope the buses come. They're in stock right. And the total cost for this contract is nine hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one and seventy-two.
Okay, are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, then I'll open it up to my board and maybe those on the finance committee too, if you want to speak to this decision.
Yeah, thank you. The arts, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant, is there an expiration date on that, on using that funding?
Yes, thank you for asking. It expires June twenty twenty-six.
And then the, you said the buses are in stock, meaning no question, we would have them here by August. Okay.
That was their commitment to us.
And I'll just share with my board colleagues, when we had this discussion at the finance subcommittee, Monique very nicely said there was a great discussion. I had a lot of questions, right, on using this funding for this specific reason. I told the, I absolutely support purchasing the buses. The question more was how we could pay for it. So I appreciate Monique and team really doing a deep dive almost as to what these funds can be used for and that we are already fulfilling those obligations, the arts obligations with the, another fund source. So we also had a discussion about funds in the future. If we're receiving funds for a specific purpose, my recommendation would be to use them for the purpose we're receiving them for. But I felt comfortable with, after having this conversation, trustee Wong was also there moving forward with the recommendation on purchasing the first four. With this funding, we know we'll need to purchase another four in the next year, I think. So I think we have discussions coming up on unassigned funding and things like that where maybe we can keep this in mind as well.
Aren't there any questions?
I have. Yeah. No, so you, go for it. Okay. So I have a question because I've heard it be said before that when certain transportation is being purchased with a certain types of funding, it is only then limited to be used for those specific type. Is that what this is going to do in the sense of it will only allow the band or those types of services to utilize the bus? And the only reason why I'm asking is because we have been asked in the past for certain athlete, athletic, athletics department needing sports, needing transportation and they can't utilize it because those specific types of vehicles are only geared because of a certain funding that were used. So will this limit these types of transportation units to only be for this particular type of activity?
Using this funding source will not limit our use of the buses to be able to support.
Okay.
We'll be able to use it for field trips, for home to school transfers, transportation, excuse me, transportation for athletics. It's, it's for our
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much. I did have a question on what impacted the pulling or deciding to use those funds, what impacted that have on the arts programs, if any?
Great question. It is not having an impact on our plan. So when the arts, music, AMIM, the short acronym for this, this funding came about in twenty twenty-two, we had not yet known about or received Prop ninety-eight and that's, sorry. Twenty-eight, thank you. Prop twenty-eight funding, the arts and music and schools funding. That wasn't there. And now we have this other ongoing funding source that's able to support our art.
Oh, trustee Wong.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was trying to make a comment earlier when you asked the finance committee if they had any discussion. It was absolutely a rich discussion and Monique just kind of laid out the history of, as many of you know, I work in policy in the legislature and when this funding was originally passed, it really was a catchall because they put in a clause. And by the way, you can use it for any, anything you need district, right? And so this is prior to proposition twenty-eight. And and so I think that they were banking on twenty-eight. They did not know that it was going to happen. So I think we are blessed that the voters of California had voted up support for twenty-eight that will be restricted. And so this isn't, and to vice president Coffey's point, we can use it for other things in our district, extracurriculars, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm supportive of it primarily because of the really great questions that my colleagues have asked is that we haven't lost a level of VAPA services and supports for our kids. And we get to actually still meet our transportation needs that are for the entire district and other extracurricular programs, including our VAPA students. So, and our FFA students that we saw earlier.
All right, I just wanted to ask maybe for an update, not in this moment, but if you could share with us about the electric buses that can't be fixed and maybe some little bit more information about that so we can all understand. You know, what is our fleet and then what, what are our limitations with some of our current vehicles? And it wasn't that long ago, we have an incredible transportation team. So this is not a dig on anyone, but where I was on the side of the road with many Washington Unified students because our bus stopped working and they had a quick fix and were wonderful. But you know, that's the last place you want to be is pulled over on the side of the road with a whole bunch of students on a, you know, and it our number one priority is to keep our kids safe and to have buses and vehicles that can get them to their destination safely. And it's unacceptable really to have anything less. So thank you for this and 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 for finding the funding sources and asking all of those hard questions. All right, can I get a motion to approve? Moved by vice president Coffey, seconded by trustee Hunt, trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Vice president Coffey.
Aye.
Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
And I too vote aye. Thank you. All right, and now that takes us to, oh, nope, not yet. Now this takes us to action item seven, approval to appoint a measure Z citizen bond oversight committee member. Again, Monique Sobal, our chief business officer.
We are so excited for this. Request for approval and appointment of a new citizens bond oversight committee member for our measure Z. The citizens bond oversight committee is a required committee of community members from specific sectors that hear about and attend meetings related to a general obligation bonded district. They have oversight, they look at our financials, they provide information, as you know, or may know, once a year, they come and give a report on whether or not they believe that we are spending the money in the way that the voters voted to spend. And so at this time, we did have a new member and it is a PTA member at Bridgeway Island that we are asking you to appoint to the committee.
Okay, great. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, are there any board questions or comments?
I think this is a site, Bridgeway, or is this member from a different site?
This member actually has students at Bridgeway, I'm so sorry, at Stonegate and River City.
I'm sorry.
We know all of our PTA board members.
My apologies.
Okay. Did you have a question?
I think I asked this before, maybe, maybe or maybe not, but you guys go through the process of like notifying the public that if they want to apply for the committees, just like the seven eleven, that's the first one that I was a part of. There wasn't a lot of response, right, like that I've, this is just my opinion. I'm like, I would think more people would be, would apply. Is that the same, is that what you're, the trend that you're seeing, like?
It is a challenge. It is a our measure Z. Still here, but we do have a measure Z, a former measure Z CBOC member. It is a commitment. It's a commitment of time. The measure Z CBOC was six, seven years, maybe even ten years long, measure Z? B, I'm sorry, measure B? Yes, it was, it's a long commitment. And volunteers, it's hard, especially from very specific sectors. And so we continue to advertise, we continue to share information, we continue to send out to try to
That's all I, I was just curious. Thank you.
Can I have a motion? Moved by vice president Coffey, seconded by clerk Castro, trustee Hunt.
Aye.
Vice president Coffey.
Aye.
Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Trustee Wong. And I too vote aye. Thank you. All right, now that takes us to our board governance. We have our board governance workshop, roles, responsibilities and effective practices, Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez for bringing forth this item to, we're excited that this is the first full school year for this board as a governance team. And so knowing the commitment for the work and the importance of the roles, the board has requested to spend some time making sure we are aware as a team of all of the best practices, using a framework for a new government governance team. We looking at the superintendent evaluation system as a governance team. And so this item tonight is to approve moving forward with the training that has been requested that would be facilitated by a governance consultant for the California School Boards Association. That is the role of CSBA and making sure that school boards have training and they provide these two workshops and so bringing it forward to begin the process of scheduling these sessions for our work together.
And I think one of the things we are going to do tonight was to look at our calendars, right, and have those dates down. Okay.
So in looking, in having the opportunity to speak with each trustee, it's looking like the dates of August twenty-second and the twenty-third were the ones that we were able to find coordinated schedules for. What we need to think about is the timing, the start times. Each session Friday would be three hours and then Saturday would be a three hour session. So depending on work schedules for Friday, if people would be able to start at a four thirty, that would allow to end by seven thirty. And then on that Saturday, to start at eight AM, end at eleven, and that would give everyone still a good part of their Saturday to do non-board work.
All right, does that look like? All right, so what do your schedules look like? Could people start at four thirty? Is that too early?
Yeah, it's good. No, that's good. It's good. Yes, I can.
Okay.
Yep.
You can?
I'm a full-time worker in Sacramento, but I'll make it, I'll make, I'll accommodate, make it work. So, yeah.
We are all full-time workers up here, so.
I was just going to say that.
We, we have
Some work from, some don't.
No, no, I know what you mean. It's, yeah, it is a challenge.
We, we can start five, five-thirty. It really is what works for the, the group as a whole. The, the topic is so important as we've all discussed. Having everyone there from start to finish, I know is all of your priority. So I would just, if four thirty doesn't work, or Castro or trustee Wong, does five o'clock or five-thirty, would those be better? We just need to make sure we're taking that into consideration.
Five and five-thirty work better for me.
Good.
Five and five-thirty work better for me, but if, if everybody else needs to do the earlier, then that's
No, I, I don't think that we need to do the earlier. We were asking if that's possible.
That's when we were available. Yes, we were available as early as four thirty. Whatever time you guys want to do after.
So five and four, five-thirty is good. Okay, well, let's, let's say five-thirty so that you can both get there without the stress. And then maybe the next morning, let's look at starting maybe at eight-thirty. What do you think about that?
I prefer an early start on Saturday. I'm changing plans to make it there on Saturday. So sooner I can get out of there, the better.
All right, well then, okay, then we'll keep it, then we'll keep it at that eight o'clock time. But then we'll do a five-thirty start time on Friday to accommodate everyone. Good. Okay, perfect. All right. So, thank you. And the reasoning too of doing that right away in August is we want to meet the, our contract obligations too in terms of our, our having our goals ready and done together. So thank you all for making that work on a tight timeline. So that takes us to our board and superintendent comments, Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, trustees. So tonight is the final board meeting of the summer because at our next board meeting, we will have started the new school year. Twenty-five, twenty-six is beginning for our students on August sixth. We're very excited. I know it feels like where did the time go? But I, I remind parents who share with me. Remember, we were out at the beginning of June, like we had June, we had July, even though it doesn't feel like that, but we're getting ready here. And then for Washington Middle College, because their calendar is linked to the community college system, those students will begin on August eighteenth. So we just know that there's a little bit of, of difference, but we're making sure that we're supporting middle college on their start date and supporting our staff for their start date. So we're excited. We've been planning, just getting everything ready. We had the summer programming that we've talked about. It was a vibrant and enriching summer. I just once again want to thank all of our staff members who had some part, whether it was teaching or supporting in many ways. We had our bus drivers, food services, fiscal, everybody was working and the thought that that ended, I believe, on the eighth and our rooms will be clean in a month because that's the dedication of our team. We're getting out the bus route. We know that there's a lot of changes and we're excited about our Elkhorn modernization project that is going to be beginning. And so that's a huge change for the Elkhorn community. And so our admin team has been working to get information out to the community. We've heard from parents, we've heard from neighbors, just taking everyone's input into consideration. We've added some more staff to make sure that there's crossing guards and extra yard supervision and just all the things to make it a smooth transition. So that's what we've been working on. Yesterday, we had the opportunity to host the Freedom Schools Day of Social Action. It was an amazing event and I'm sure President Kirby Gonzalez and trustee Hunt will share their experiences there, but I just want to thank you all for just being there. That meant so much. And, and for those of you who were able to attend and be readers, the feedback that I have received from parents of just that this board really listens to community and when just that this board really listens to community and when people ask for things and talk about the need for their students to feel seen, valued, um and heard, that we bring in programs that allow that. So I'm thanking you on behalf of parents, when I went to a parent meeting, these are the things that they wanted me to, to make sure that I shared with you. And then in terms of preparing for the school year, our um all of our administrators, uh school site and districts, their first day back was last Thursday, so July seventeenth. Now we are a full team, back in the swing of things and um we had what we call our admin advance and it is a two-day uh professional development that allows us to focus on what are the district's priorities? Um, what are the things that they need to know before the first day of school? Um, we had a, a three, a half-day training for principals and assistant principals. Um, because we are adopting a new ELA curriculum, so making sure they had an overview of that curriculum, our theme was literacy lights the way. Our focus is really literacy, that is everything, you have literacy in all subjects, including math. So we're really focused on that this year and everyone is nervous and excited for all the right reasons. Um, and so we will continue to make sure that we provide that um support, I always look at support in terms of um my best years as being a principal and all the many other jobs is I would always ask myself and then when I became a principal or any other type of district leader, what does support look and feel like? Because the feel like that it really is support, so you might think you're supporting, but if that doesn't feel like support, those are the things that I want to make sure that our team knows that we care about, we, we understand that that is an important and complex and difficult and happy job. And our role is to remove barriers, so that the work can be done at our school sites, so we're excited about that. We have um, next week we'll have onboarding for new principals, so we, we have a new principal at River City, Jake Guyvet, and we have a new principal at Riverbank, Katie Rodriguez. So we will be having some um one-on-one time with them next week, um we're, and we have a new principal at Stonegate, Norma Gillis. And so fortunately, we have attracted principals with experience and that is not always the norm, especially in a district our size, to be able to recruit people who have experience and when they come and we ask, well, you know, what made you think about Washington Unified and they talk about all of the great things that they have heard about our district. And they know that we have a strategic plan and they, they know people in the community and they said, I want to be a part of that, and so we're fortunate that they're coming to us with experience as principals, but they are new to this role in our community. So helping them to learn the culture of the district, who the people are for support, so we will have that onboarding next week. And we will also have um new teacher orientation, Thurs- two days, uh Thursday and Friday of next week. I think we have about sixty new teachers that we will be onboarding, so we're very excited, I think we may have one teacher vacancy, I'm looking at assistant superintendent of HR Shay Borges is one, one and a half, but um we are at a point this year in hiring where we have the least amount of vacancies with the school starting than we have had in many, many years, so I just want to thank the team for, the HR team uh for your hard work, because while everyone else is taking summer vacation, the one department that is here, that would be human resources. So they are working and making sure not only certificated um positions are filled, but that our classified positions are filled as well, so we're excited about that um orientation. So a lot of great things happening. Um, before I end, I just want to reaffirm for our community that we are aware that there is some true concerns about safety. Um, for our families who might be concerned about immigration um activities and things that may not necessarily have happened here in West Sacramento. It is happening to people's families, it is happening to people's friends, their communities um all over. And we remain steadfast and committed to supporting all of our families. We will be providing training and what to do for our administrators to share with their staff. If there is an issue at a school site, what to do? We will be making sure that we send communication to our families that we are here to protect our children and we are here to protect our families. And I know that that is the commitment of this board, so I feel confident in the, in what I'm saying, because I am representing your voice, I am representing what you have shared with me, the questions that you asked me about how are we supporting our families and our students and how we are getting that message out. So that will come out to our whole community, just to put people's minds at ease as much as we can. Things change every day, but when they step in our schools, when they get on that school bus, that's where the love starts. That's where the support is. We know that equity, excellence and empowerment, we know that's for every student and every day, but we also know, we think about our pillars in our strategic plan. Pillar B, family and community engagement, we're not going to have an engaged community if they don't feel safe. So that is our commitment that I'm, I'm sharing and we will be hearing more about that. And with that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hildreth. Um, could trustee Wong, are you ready to go? Do you have just a preset message to come through?
I, I, I feel like Siri wants to talk next, so, but I'm not sure if Siri was elected to the board, so, however. Um, I am just so excited for everyone to start the school year, uh thank you for that, uh Dr. Hildreth and um I know that it's been, the highest issues have been top of mind for the community, even though it hasn't happened yet, um but there, it hasn't happened in Sacramento and, and folks are just curious, including a lot of our CBOs, nonprofits who are coming back on our campus, they just want to know what the protocol is. So if we can make sure that our partners um are aware of what those protocols are, because they are an extension, especially our app before and after school programs. Um, so that they are aware of our protocols and um can work together with us. Um, speaking of partnerships, I am just, uh thank you so much for uh raising Freedom Schools, I had the privilege and honor of reading last week, the last few days, and I'm so curious to hear more about, um from my colleagues on the board about, it's just always so magical. Um, on the Freedom Schools kind of uh day, not the day of action, uh the last day, and so I'm sorry to have missed it. And I'm just grateful for the, the deep partnership um with Robert's uh family um community center. As well as uh, you know, President Kirby Gonzalez and I had the opportunity to actually also go to the uh Kinder Camp graduation, the littles are so adorable and so excited and uh this year the parents got to read out their names and it was such a magical way to kind of uh enter into the, i- into the school year, just kind of full of life and uh I'm just grateful for everybody. Our partners and our, my board colleagues and kind of leading from our heart, which is our students and our families, so with that, I will end.
Okay, thank you, trustee Hunt.
Thank you. Am I on? Yes. Um, thank you, Dr. H, for your message um this evening, I, um especially that last bit. I want to also thank all of the staff that's worked all summer long and um those of you that are coming back, we know and recognize that um, you know, it takes work, even if you're not back until July seventeenth, I'm sure you were at home prepping for your um upcoming year, so thank you guys for that um commitment to our students. Um, I did get to experience the National Day of Action yesterday, was that yesterday? Yes? This week sometime for Freedom Schools. I've shared before, but it was just such a special experience, this is my first year um experiencing what Freedom Schools is like. I got to take my daughter with me yesterday and um for the, my children are mixed race and it was really cool to, with, they're African-American, it was really cool to see her in an atmosphere where she could experience her culture. Um, and I am committed to continue to bring programs like that for all of our students to, within our district. Um, it's really a special thing when you can see kids feeling seen, so. Um, okay, so I, I, we've seen a lot of um communication on our after-school programs, Waitlist, thank you for sending that updated communication earlier this week, I'd like to request a trustee discussion on um potentially the the potential for a potential pay option. Um, I don't, we haven't had the opportunity to talk about it as a board, so I just wanted to put that there. Um, and then I, I mentioned it earlier, I think, um but would also like to, we saw numbers on the unassigned funds. I think it was last board me- board meeting or in the last couple meetings, um. So also, I, I'm not sure when that discussion would happen or if it's on the books already, but just wanted to, I'm, I look forward to that. Um, if we can get an update on the, um oh, the sports physical clinic we talked about. Um, just an update on if we've had any um movement on that. And the last thing I was going to um talk about was the school bus need, um but that was an agenda item, so that was covered, thank you for that and um I, I think it's important for all of us to understand what's happening with our electric buses and why we're kind of in this place. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Clerk Castro. Um, I'm going to be quick, I, we were sent an email for a sub, the YCSBA um for membership dues, I thi- I mentioned it at one of our meetings, so who would I, I don't know the process is, it's, okay, is it you, do I forward it to you guys or, okay? Um, and then uh, yeah, my aunt went, I wasn't able to go, to go to Freedom Schools, because I was working, but my aunt went live, so I was able to watch while she was there um in the audience and she had her, her children with her, so it was really cool, I, I wish I, I could have made it there too, but um I saw communication come out um for Elkhorn and the modernization and then transitioning from uh Elkhorn site to uh, oh god, I call it the old River City, the Clarendon site, um so I appreciate that and um I hear the construction every morning at six AM, so I'm really excited about that. Um, but um I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, vice president Coffey.
All right, well, since we're talking about Freedom Schools, I had the privilege to do a read aloud, um had a lot of fun. Um, I read the book with no pictures. And it was funny, because one of the kids was like, I know this book, and I said, don't say nothing. Um, so yeah, it was, it was really, it was a lot of fun. Um, looking forward to transitioning into the next thing, looking forward to orientation. Um, Washington Middle College, although they start on the eighteenth, they have a full day of orientation on the thirteenth. And it's for both parents and students. I did not sign up for school, and so I thought I was done, but it looks like I'm going back to school on the thirteenth. Um, so uh but also speaking back on, sorry, Freedom Schools, I see my notes. Um, I wanted to share that there were some parents that shared with me um how there was a huge shift in their children's love of reading. And that before they were timid or they just didn't try, but this got them wanting to read more. And now they are really excited for this upcoming year because of the love that they now have for, for reading, so I just have to say that, that warms my heart, because I love to read and um I love books, so that's just great. Um, also huge thank you to the staff for all the work you guys have done. Um, it sometimes feels like it's a thankless job, but we really do see you and we thank you for all the time and the commitment that you put in for contracts, for negotiations, for all of that and uh can't say thank you enough, because we, we, we know you're doing the work and we see it, so thank you. Um, last thing that I had and I wanted to ask, um because we have, um you mentioned Dr. H, that there was the literacy lights the way, um there was a comment that was posted about dyslexia awareness and if there was any training also within that um literacy, um uh literacy lights the way training, so I just wasn't sure if there was and if there is training provided, um you let me know and, and that way we can at least share that out, um because um as we did have a previous board member who was who advocated for that a lot, I want to make sure that uh that we are targeting and um helping our staff and you know, everybody help in that area wherever they can. And on that note, I pass it on to you.
All right, thank you for all those comments. Um, the, our, we look closely at our data, right, it comes before us on our SCL surveys, on our state testing assessments and we have seen um over time that there are gaps um that we have had, predominantly when I think of some of the SCL pieces. Um, our students of color have shown up in that data as uh needing, needing more support and resources and I think Freedom Schools is just one um of many, but one beautiful way to be very targeted in our support and to address um the data needs that come before us that we see, um but in a really powerful way, you know, you don't walk into um a Freedom Schools classroom and feel like there is no deficits, that is only a place of celebration and of fostering a love of learning and really um supporting students and when I asked them, um forgive me if I've said this before, I'll share it again though, when I asked students, what would you like to carry over from Freedom Schools into the school year? And they said, well, I want more celebration of kids, we should have more celebrations. Um, and I think that's so true, after a student shares, you know, the, the power of cheering for one another um and the power of seeing all these adults they look up to, um you know, singing about how reading is cool, it really makes it cool and fun. And not only is Freedom Schools supporting our students with a love of uh literacy and not only is it supporting them in some of those SCL components and connectedness to school and everything else. Another, I think, sort of unintended but really special piece of that is that these are incredible young adults that are working with the kids every day. And uh when I was there um reading this, this past um few weeks ago, I recognized one of the teachers from the year prior and she said, I'm working to become a teacher now. And so this is a really great way also to hopefully get some recruitment of educators who will stay in our schools and who will come and work for WUSC, because they are really um are on to something and they're just passionate, wonderful people to be around, you just don't want to leave. And the kids will tell you that, um you know, they, they don't want to leave either, they're really enjoying that programming, so um it, it's just really special and I really appreciate all their work. Um, another one that I didn't want to leave uh was the ELOP, the Ninja Warrior course. Um, although it's really hard, I don't know, I fell a lot, it's very hard, I uh, you have to do a lot of push-ups before you tackle that course. Um, but that was pretty fun to get to see, you know, our kids get to see a real Ninja Warrior who's on TV, who's there supporting them, cheering them on. Um, and if you're trying to run up the warp wall, that was my one success, with a little like push from him. And made it up over that warp wall, but it's pretty cool too for our kids, there's so many experiences all summer long that we have for our students and that um is just one example too of, of a really exciting way to bring kids uh together. Kinders Go to College uh was really special, one thing that um that trustee Wong um talked about how parents were announcing their kids, but they weren't just announcing their kids' names, Scott Moke, the King's announcer, was there and he was giving a little like um training on how to announce your students' names. And so parents weren't just saying their kids' names, they were calling out their height, their stats, what they were good at, and then their names and coming up to huge applause. So I probably should have prepared that for all of you this evening when I called your names. Um, but it just made it really, really special as well. Um, and then some of the big pieces um that we have coming up um is our um annual back-to-school giveaway that is happening, right, it's happening this Saturday. Um, River City High School from eight to twelve, um with. With lots of resources there, you do have to be a Yolo County resident and we always see a lot of our, our kids and our families there. And it's a really powerful day. And I know our students are looking forward to, parents are not allowed at the River City orientation, but they're looking forward to that next Wednesday, which will be a great day. And thank you for offering transportation for them as well to do that. I also had the honor of going by the Admin Advance, who was spoken about on behalf of my fellow colleagues. And it was really nice to see all of our administrators and district leaders in the room, giving their time and getting excited. It's, it is that exciting kind of energy right now, if people get ready to welcome everybody back and hopefully have taken time to refresh for themselves. So before I go on, I think you mentioned our Assistant Superintendent of HR Shay Burgess. We have a position and a half. Should we do a call out on Ed Join? Is there something on there right now, like a Spanish teacher in the high school? Awesome. So if anybody watching has a dream of, of teaching TK, which is pretty magical, then, then apply to Washington Unified and you can help lay the foundation for our youngest learners. They are excited. They're probably the most excited on our entire campus to come to school. Okay. And then also I want to say, welcome as well to our new Admin Assistant, Janay McLean. So welcome, we're so glad that you are here to support Dr. Hildreth and the board. So, okay. Now I'm going to take it into our future board agenda items. And to recap, I heard, I think this could just be like an executive summary update on our electric buses. I heard also an update for some of the measures for dyslexia that could also be an update for us through, I think an email update, you're okay with that for right now?
Yeah, for right now.
Okay. And then a discussion for future board agenda of after-school programs, discussing our options for a sliding scale. A discussion for a board meeting in the future on our unassigned funds. And then we could have an update over email, I think, on the sports physicals. Okay. Are there any other items that I missed or that think people want to share?
I have two that I will need to get input from the board. We had originally had a teaching and learning session on the books, but we've changed it because of some of the need for the governance training timelines. But we would like to have that the week of September 15th. So I will be sending that just to see, begin to see availability. The other item that we are going to need to plan to discuss is really our early childhood education needs.
Okay.
What that might look like and next steps, because that could, you know, we want to be able to make sure we're able to communicate if there's any change. So I will be sending emails just to let you know, these are some things we need to do quickly. So calendar is always the challenge.
It is. And I think that, that week you're speaking of in September, I am taking my Girl Scouts to the beach. But you, you would be talking about a weekday.
Yeah, a weekday within that week, yes.
Okay. All right, so as long for me, as long as it's not on Friday. But if you send something out, that would be great. And then the other items that are here are annual reporting for Prop 28, which is the Arts and Music in Schools. That is going to be on a future agenda item. For September, future agenda item, we have the VAPA band schedule for grade six through eight. We also have an SRO MOU update, which will be coming to us. And then we have the WUSC Strategic Plan Dashboard update and that will be in September. Okay? If there's nothing else, then have fun getting ready for school and enjoying these last, last few days with your families and.
August 13th, go and see the pigs.
Oh, yes. If you want to know about seeing or purchasing pigs, we have information. Just email us or reach out, or Ms. McAllister. All right, we're adjourned.